Good afternoon and welcome to Veterans and Politics International Panel Interview for Member State Board of Education District Number Three. Since we only have one candidate, the candidate will get three minutes for introduction and then three minutes for conclusion as well if you need that much time. Once the timer goes off, I won't stop you mid-sentence because that's just rude, but you'll get 15 seconds to wrap up. Okay? Sound good? And then you will also get, you'll get three minutes to respond to panel members' questions. Same rules, I won't interrupt you mid-sentence, but after the timer goes off, if you can wrap up in 15 seconds, that would be great. Okay, so the first thing we want to do is we'll start off by allowing you to introduce yourself. Give, please give the viewers and listeners a background about yourself as well, just so they know a little bit about your background and things like that.
Sure.
Ms. Ortiz, go ahead.
I'm a current member of the State Board of Education. Yeah, thanks COVID.
Can you click on, I don't, I don't think your mic is on.
Check, check, check.
Okay.
I'm a current member of the State Board of Education. I was originally appointed in 2016 by Governor Sandoval to complete somebody else's term, and then I ran that year and won in November, so this is my first full term. I have been advocate for education for many years. Prior to being on the state board, I was involved in many organizations, did a lot of volunteer work. Even at one point, gosh, now 15 years ago, worked for a company that was doing after-school tutoring programs for kids, and I didn't see the needle moving. I didn't see things changing. So I also didn't see anyone sitting at the table representing kids that looked like me. And majority of the kids do. And so I decided I needed to step up. There were several people that had kind of nudged me in that direction. I wasn't very excited about stepping into politics, but at some point, three people sent me the letter from Governor Sandoval, and I figured, you know, I was getting the big flashing red sign. The sign doesn't get any bit more than that, and so I figured if I applied and it was meant to be, that was going to be my path. And so as soon as I got the appointment, I filed a run a week later and just went full steam ahead. And so I've been representing, I've spent a lot of my time advocating for adequate funding for all of our schools. A big, big chunk of my focus has been on equity, so making sure that all kids are getting the right education. We have some major opportunity gaps in Nevada between kids, anything from between rural and urban to our special needs kids. You know, those kids, we don't have sufficient programming for many of our, what I like to call extraordinary students. And so we, we can do better. I feel like we can always do better. So I decided to keep, keep working. That's why I'm running for reelection. So a little bit of background, quick, quick background.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Originally from the other Vegas, New Mexico. Yes. I'll be here 19 years this year, so this Vegas is home now. And a business degree and a master's degree later, I run a small business here in town, so I'm a business owner. That's my day job that pays the bills.
First off, I want to apologize, I got mixed up. So what I'm gonna do now is, so here's the, here's what we're gonna do with the panel members. The panel members will also give you, we'll keep it real brief, like 15 seconds, just so, just so you kind of know who we are as well.
Okay.
My name is Jim Jonas. I am the host of the Veterans and Politics International Video and Radio Program. Been doing that since 2008, and so that's my background. Now, the first question I have for you, because looking at the paper here, so what is the difference between, I see Regent State University District, and then I see Member State Board of Education? What's the difference between those two?
That is a great question, because I feel like a lot of times, all of our races are at the bottom of the ballot, and people don't always understand the difference. So there's Regent, which is over all of the higher ed institutions. That's, you know, community college universities, so UNLV, Community College of Southern Nevada, Nevada State College, all the ones up north, TMCC, Great Basin, and so on. Regent's oversee higher ed, State Board of Ed oversees K-12 public education from a state perspective. And then there's the Board of Trustees that are district specific. So Board of Trustees at the district level, State Board at the state level. So as a state board, we set all of the policy and like statewide goals and regulations. The school districts are responsible for actually implementing that. So we are the what, they're the how.
Thank you very much for clarifying that. So my first question to you then is gonna be, so right now, we're ranked 49th as a state in education.
47th, actually.
47th, yeah, and I would, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, because I've gotten, over conversations with people, we've kind of went, they've kind of went back and forth on the rankings and how the rankings work. So even 47th is not good.
No, no, and it really depends on which organizations report you're looking at. So there's a couple different national organizations that do the rankings, and they have different criteria, so it depends on which one you're looking at.
Okay, thank you. So either way.
I'd rather it be four.
Yeah, correct. So just, you get three minutes, so it's gonna be kind of a long-winded question, but you have three minutes to answer it. Why do you think we rank so low? And if you could give just two bullet points, like the top two, of how you think we could better, we could increase that score?
So there's, there's two major factors that drop us in those rankings, one of which is we don't offer universal pre-K, where a lot of other states do that now, and so that immediately drops our rankings. The other is the number of people in the community that hold a higher education degree. In Nevada, that number's about 30%. So twofold, so those are two things that we could do today, well, it would take time, but two, two big things we could do. Number one, start offering universal pre-K, because it's research proven that kids' brains are developing the most from six months to three years. So if we got in there sooner and set that solid foundation of their education, then we would do better in the long run. The second thing is helping to ensure every student is college and career ready, meaning that they go to a higher ed institution and get one of those higher ed degrees. That right now, our, our rate is good, but the number of students that require remediation when they go up to higher ed is still too high. There's also not a good result as far as the number of kids that actually complete higher ed. So that's, that's the stuff kind of outside the K-12 system that could be improved. Within the K-12 system, there's several things. So our reading and math scores and all of these reports that have come out, the most, I think, common one is the Annie Casey Report. Shows that while we're improving, the trajectory is good, but it's low. I mean, it's not a massive improvement. And part of that comes from what the experience is of the student in the school. So there's a lot of, a lot of things that we've been trying to attack that would change those trajectories, right? So number one is making sure that we catch kids up, that they're all reading by grade three, because that's kind of an indicator that most people look at. If you're reading well by grade three, that means you're gonna be successful in the rest of the grades. The other major factor that we're tackling as a state is chronic absenteeism. There's many schools in our school district where they have over 25% of kids that are chronically absent. So to define that, chronically absent means they miss more than two days a month. So if you miss two days a month, you're considered chronically absent. That's 10% of the school year. So 180 days in the school year, two days a month is 18 days, right? And unfortunately, that number's super high. And especially for our younger kiddos, the every day of instruction is so important because it sets the foundation for the next set of lessons, right? So if that foundation, I'm in construction, that's my day job, if that foundation is not solid, then the walls aren't gonna be built on top of a solid foundation, right? And so every year that there's something missing, that is a bigger gap. And so our biggest focus right now is also decreasing chronic absenteeism. Those things alone would make a massive difference, but that all comes down to having enough teachers and smaller class sizes.
Well, I'm gonna turn it over to Frank, but thank you very much. And that answer, I've learned more about why we rank than I have in all the, I don't know the best word to put it, but just, people talk in real generalistic terms when it comes to education, they just say we're bad. So I just, I just want to thank you for clarifying a lot of those things for me, I appreciate that.
Yeah, if you, if you took just Clark County School District, right, and compared us to other urban school districts, and took those two factors out, we'd be in the top third.
Which two?
Preschool, number of adults with a college degree.
Hi, I'm Frank Switzer, Veterans and Politics, family court activist. I actually have a gifted daughter. She's in the top 99 percentile of the entire nation, not just Nevada, but the whole nation.
That's fabulous. It's glad you don't live up north, because there's a school just for them up north.
Yeah. So I actually have two questions for you. One, just what you stated, my daughter can't go to certain places because I'm not zoned for them. So she has to stick around with students who cannot be at her level, who the teacher has to focus on them, instead of my daughter getting the attention that she needs. Would you be okay with parents getting the same tax dollars, the same vouchers they get now for a child going to a school that they're zoned for, and allowing the parents to pick the school that their child can go to? Would you be okay with that? And recently, you've seen an incline in weird education, very weird education. Schools are now teaching that transgenders can read storytime to your children while wearing pretty much nothing. Sex education needs to be taught. Would you be against something that would tell kids that, one, they have to accept an adult who is attracted to them as a sexual orientation, and would you allow transgendered persons to sit there and break the school dress code and read stories to children?
Well, I can't, I can't say that that's happening here in Nevada, thank God. I don't, I've never had a report of that in my time on the school board. So yes, I agree, we do need sexual, sex education, age-appropriate sex education. And the, I'm trying to go back to your first question. So the first question about whether parents should be able to send their kids to any school that they want, yeah. I don't think that there should be anything preventing parents from sending the kids to the school that they, they choose is right for their kid. I mentioned the one up north, I can't remember the name of it now, but it is specifically for super high-performing kids. Now, in my dream world, if I had that magic button, those kinds of programs would be available at every school. Because what we've found in our most recent equity study is that while there are one in four kids that are, are tested for and shown to be gifted and talented in some of our nicer area schools, it's one in 112 in some of our urban schools. And so I feel like we're failing kids in that there are probably a whole lot more that are qualified for those services and should be getting that higher rigor of school, and we're just not testing enough. So that's the other thing. As far as what kids are taught, as far as gender goes, that is a family decision, right? So kids get taught about, what I want kids to learn in school is how their bodies work, right? So that they at least know what's going on with them when they're going through puberty. Everything else, I feel like, is left for the family to teach.
So you would be against a sex ed curriculum that taught them that an adult being attracted to them is an okay sexual preference and orientation?
As a matter of fact, we just passed a curriculum that teaches kids exactly the opposite. So the student legislature, so there's students that get selected to go to the legislature. In 2017, passed a bill SB 108 about teaching kids about laws that can be broken by and against kids under 18. One of those, or some of those laws include sexual assault. And so, again, age appropriately, teaching kids about safe space, what is welcome/unwelcome attention, all of that kind of thing, so that they're aware and they know when it's inappropriate and when to report to another adult. So that was built into the health curriculum, I think in this last year, and should be implemented come 2020 school year. The kids are the ones that wanted it, by the way.
Okay, thanks, Felicia. My name is Michael Yupko. My background, I'm the first-generation college graduate, my family, criminal justice, psychology double major, police officer in South Carolina for a couple of years. Got hired by the FBI, they sent me out here, I was with the FBI five years, and I didn't like that, didn't like where that career was going, and I became a...
But you liked Vegas.
I liked Vegas. I got here in 1991, and in 90, well, 99, I started my own process serving in private eye business, and I sold it about five years ago. My wife and I talked quite a bit, and so did my mother and father, and, you know, they say when you're young, you have all the answers. When you get older, all you have is questions. Well, the only answer that I know for sure is education. So appreciate your efforts to date. I don't believe in change, I think change is a given. We're all changing here right now, we're all dying, so I don't like the word change, and I'm not an Obama fan, so his speeches about change, changy, changy-feely, don't try to offend anybody, but I can do it very easily. You either get better, you stay the same, or you get worse. So I like what you mentioned about improving. We need improvement, and there has to be a sense of urgency to do that, and I hope you're the person. My question is, from the state level, which I didn't know, okay, I'm learning this, it's the first time I've come across a candidate running for this office, my opinion, especially as a former Fed, you have to have big-picture thinking, and I'm not saying that you don't, but if you're at the state level, first of all, how many schools are in your District Three?
There's about 156, I believe. Don't quote me on that. There's 320 total, but I have quite a bit, because I've got everything west of Russell to the California border, including most of Summerlin, all of Henderson, and all the way down to Laughlin.
Okay, we all know that success, improvement, comes from personal relationships. Okay, you can sit up here and, you know, get on the soapbox like I tend to do all the time, but you have to make context.
That's my push for more teachers.
Okay, do you have 156 files on every school? Because we have something called computers with big memory banks, to be able to reach out and connect with the right person, and I would say in this way, how do we bridge the gap, what I'm calling the preparation or unprepared gap, between high schoolers and higher education? Okay, now, understand, you're at the state level in your K-12. My argument is, I had students, I came into my senior year at Bowling Green State University, where they needed help, and I, as a senior, I got a job part-time as a student, special services tutor, after I used it for a week or two. Then I helped people. There has to be other gaps to bridge, to find out, because I know we had a previous candidate in another office said, hey, everybody shouldn't go to college, and I agree. We need people that can go right into the workforce. You know, I don't know how to change engines or work on engines, there's somebody that can do that, that's mechanical skills, nor, and there's training, there's military, there's all kinds of, this is a land of opportunity. Colleges may not be for everyone. You know, I've said, training teaches you how to do something the right way or the correct way. Education implies choices. So to become an educated person, you realize, first of all, as I did, how little you know. Second of all, you're gonna become a lifelong learner, but three, you don't go anywhere just sitting around. So my question to you, to try to be fair, you're at the state level, I have nothing less than expectations that you have big-picture thinking. If you don't, you shouldn't be running. So I hope you have big-picture thinking, and in the big-picture thinking, how are we gonna bridge that gap? Your gap with your 156 schools under your authority and purview, how are you going to make them better or worse?
Okay, so first of all, I don't, I don't tend to think of it as just the 156. To me, all 490,000 kids are mine. I call myself the other mother. So they're all my babies. I'm concerned with all of them. I want them all to succeed. So one of the, I do several things. Number one is creating relationships. So I am on the President's Advisory Council for Nevada State College. I work very closely with UNLV as well, to kind of get that feedback loop happening. What are we not doing in K-12 that you're seeing that kids need when they come into the university? So that we make sure that we're better preparing them. There's several programs that we're already doing within K-12 that are helping. So number one is dual credit. Kids can take classes in high school, earn credit for college and high school at the same time. If a kid is really motivated, they could graduate high school with an associate's degree. So not only does that get them a foot in the door, it also saves their parents a lot of money. The third thing is we have programs now, so specifically around education in particular, because we're trying to build that pipeline of teachers. They're called teacher academies, where the colleges are teaching courses on the high school campus to get kids on that track to become teachers. There's other programs like that, some of our career and tech ed schools have programs like that, but that one in particular has had a lot of success and will be probably one of the best solutions that Nevada has to filling that teacher pipeline. So beyond that, it's also ensuring that, and this is happening now, it's getting there, with the latest superintendent, there's been a lot of effort on this too, is making sure all of the remediation happens while they're still in high school. So if they're not up to what we would consider that standard for going into college, that is measured in Nevada by their ACT score, so a 22 is considered college-ready, right? So if they're not up to that standard, we offer them one test for free, and then if they qualify for free reduced lunch, they could retake that test with the, like, they get a voucher to retake it, up to three times. So that's how we're measuring them, to make sure that they're ready. If they're not ready, then we're putting supports in place to either have summer tutoring or additional classes or whatever to get them to that point before they graduate. Obviously, this year is a little bit of a different animal, so we're gonna tackle that one a little differently, but that's what was in progress before COVID came about.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Felicia. My name's Gianno Amato, I lived here all my life. I've also spent a lot of time in Las Vegas, New Mexico, growing up.
Yeah, no way.
Yeah.
You don't have the accent.
No. But, so I'm a prior nightclub owner. Right now, I purchase vehicles and resell them, and then also, I've been with Veterans and Politics for approximately the last year. So my first question is, you mentioned more teachers. So every year, there's a conversation about money in the legislature, but it seems it'll never happen. So where do you suppose we get the extra funding we need for the education here in Las Vegas?
It's funny you mention that, because that's part of the reason I was late. One of my big A-frame signs is on somebody's property it's not supposed to be, so somebody called me to tell me to move it, and he ended up talking to me for 15 minutes about this very thing. So there's several options, right? So right now, according to the latest study, because the legislature sure loves to pay for studies, not necessarily to increase the dollars, just pay for more studies, just saying. So the latest study showed that we're at 58% of adequacy. That was two years ago. God only knows what it's gonna be after all of this, right? So the state would need, our school budget for the entire state, K-12, all districts, is $5 billion with a B. We would need another $1.5 billion to get to adequacy. I don't know about you guys, but I'm never satisfied with adequate. I want to be better than adequate. I'm a little type A. So obviously, we need a little bit more than that. So there's several proposals on the table today. The local teachers' union has put forth a couple of initiatives that would help to raise some of that money. One of them is increasing sales tax, the other is increasing gaming tax. Well, as we can tell from what has just happened right now, that is all very, very, very dependent on the economy. So it's what you call a volatile tax, right? So it dips with the economy. The other pieces of, that we haven't really addressed, is property tax. Property tax is more of a stable tax. Right now, we're at about, and I'm just basing this on my own personal property, less than 1% of the current property value is what I pay in property taxes. Most states, at least the states that are super well-funded and have, are up there in the top five, their property taxes range from 6% to 9%. So you kind of get what you pay for, right? Let's take Massachusetts. Massachusetts is the number one state in the country for education. Property taxes is in the 6% to 9% range, their gaming tax is 25%. Ours is 6.75. So there's opportunity for various areas, I think, in a way that could be braided together that made everybody happy, or made enough, less people mad. Because at the end of the day, you have to get public buy-in. If you don't have public buy-in, it's not gonna pass. But what we're recognizing with what's happening right now is our economy is very, very dependent on tourism. We saw that 10 years ago with the recession, we're seeing it again now. So we have to diversify our economy. That would also create potentially more of a tax base from the business side. Well, the only way businesses are gonna come into Nevada, or Las Vegas in particular, and set up shop here is if we have a solid education system. It's a catch-22, right? So we have to invest in an education system that's producing the workforce that businesses require if they're gonna move here. So that's, I'm gonna keep fighting for it, I've been doing it for years, and I'm, that's the hill I'm gonna die on.
Great answer.
Thank you, thank you very much. My next question, and just so that we get more, everybody can ask more questions, and with this, with this panel interview, we're gonna have to stay sharp on time. You had mentioned grade three.
Yeah.
And so I'll give you two minutes to respond to this. It's interesting you bring that up. I don't understand every single one of the dynamics, but I do know, I believe it was this year that it started. A good friend of mine, she was a third-grade teacher, and when they came out with, I think it was something around, like, if the kids aren't reading, and, reading and writing at a third-grade level, then they're automatically held back, so they can't progress on in fourth grade. And because she didn't want that pressure on her, a lot of the third-grade teachers left and went to either fourth grade, or they went back to second grade. Do you, do you think it's fair to put such an emphasis just on one specific grade like that? Because, let's be honest, if the first-grade teacher didn't do their job, second-grade teacher didn't do theirs, why do we put it all on the third-grade teachers?
So I'm so glad you asked that question. So the original bill was passed in 2015, I wish everybody could hear this answer, because it's important. The original bill was passed in 2015, the original bill was written, exactly what you said, if a kid isn't reading by third grade, they're held back, retained. Research has proven that that's not an effective measure. So in 2019, that was reversed, so there is no longer retention policy with the Read by Three Grade, Read by Three Bill in the legislature. So with Read by Grade Three came dollars. Now, ideally, those dollars would have been sufficient to be able to put, what most schools are doing is they're putting a reading strategist in every school. What that reading strategist is supposed to be doing is working with teachers from K through three to ensure that they're teaching all of the right stuff, that scaffolds, that gets the kid up to that level, right? So in first, you guys, if you have children, know this, right? Kindergarten, you're learning ABCs, then you're learning to put words together, then you're learning to read sentences, then you're reading books, and then you're reading chapter books, and whatever, right? So each of those is like a foundation, a set of the, level of the foundation that's building up. If you miss any bit of that, you're not getting up to the grade. To your point, if any one of those teachers in that path, and it's for some of our kids, it could be multiple teachers, because they move around a lot, we have a high transancy rate in Nevada, specifically Vegas, they miss out, right? And so that reading strategist's role is to ensure that there's consistency across the school, between those, all of the teachers in all those three, four grades, and making sure that they're, they're putting what we call interventions in place for kids that are falling behind. Now, part of the problem is that there wasn't enough money to put one of those strategists in every school, so there's schools that are sharing them. There's some schools where a teacher is playing that role. There's some schools where a teacher is playing that role on top of teaching. And so, while the idea was admirable, and what they were, there was two things, right? Trying to get kids reading by grade three, because it proves that they progressed through the rest of their grades well. The other was that it's proven that prisons look at grade three as their goal to determine how many prisons they're gonna need, because of the school-to-prison pipeline. And so, there was a very good intent behind it. But again, without enough resources, it's not gonna be implemented with fidelity.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your answer.
Of course.
Okay, so my daughter goes to school in a bad neighborhood, like we discussed. And she can't go to a gifted school that she should be able to go to. But in these bad neighborhoods, I don't see the school police. And there's constant issues all the time. And schools are a very soft target. 90% of all mass shootings are in gun-free zones. Would you be open to allowing parents who have CCWs and training, and any school teacher who wants to volunteer, or maybe a veteran who wants to be a janitor with a secondary job as a weapon carrier on campus to protect those kids? Because again, 90% of all shootings occur where there are no guns. So, if we had somebody there, trained, educated, and understood the effects of what was going to happen if they needed to, would you be opposed to having a bill that allowed campus carry for teachers to volunteer, or specialized personnel, or even allowing parents with CCWs to bring their weapon on when they pick up their kid?
So, we actually, we actually call those school resource officers. And we have, in the 2019 session, there was a bill passed to increase the number of school resource officers on every campus. The, the challenge is that it ended up becoming a grant-based award. So, rather than every school just getting dollars, they had to apply for a grant. And it was part of a four-piece grant. So, there was four things to improve safety in schools. So, one was hardening the buildings. So, there was money for that. There was more money for school resource officers, to your point. People that actually have the training, have the license to, to do, you know, exactly what you're talking about. There was also social-emotional learning. So, let's make sure the kids are getting all the support that they need so that they don't feel like they need to come to school with a gun, right? And finally, more social workers. Again, support the students so that they're, you know, if they're being bullied, they have somebody to talk to. I was on the committee that reviewed those grants. The amount of money that was asked for from the school district versus what we actually had to give away was less than, like, we had less than half of what was requested. So, that money is all coming from the marijuana tax. So, I think it was about $65 million projected this year. That might go down now, unfortunately. But the amount of, so every school district did apply for the dollars. Not nearly as many positions were able to be filled, because there wasn't enough money.
I get, I get the money issue. But what I'm talking about is more or less, somebody who's already on campus. A teacher, a janitor, a hall monitor, a principal, somebody who's already there, getting paid. Get maybe an extra $5,000 a year to take training and courses. And also allow parents to bring their weapons on campus when coming to pick up their kids, is more or less my question. So, the taxpayers wouldn't have to front the bill. And it would be optional for the person who wanted to carry.
So, I'm totally okay with the person wants to get the training and get paid extra to play that role. I mean, if that's something they're willing to do, awesome. It's totally a school district decision. That's not something we can mandate by state. We set the, like, the high-level policy, they set the how, like, how they implement it. As far as, as parents carrying weapons onto school grounds, not a big fan. We've had too many incidents where that's been, that's not worked out well, right? There's been an altercation, or, you know, something happens between students, and it just, it wasn't, whether they were licensed or not, it just wasn't a good situation, because kids are involved. And my top priority is kids.
Okay, Felicia, I'm doing some research here, and I'm trying to read my writings. So, please write me if I'm wrong. But, were you involved with a mentoring and scholarship program called GTRF? Which is the Great Teacher and Reading Fund. Are you familiar with that?
No, there was a, there was a Great Teaching and Leading Fund, which was a pot of money that came from the legislature, intended to be part of the teacher retention and recruitment kind of effort to, to help that. It was used for various different programs. The state board was responsible for giving the Department of Ed kind of guidance on like, what our priorities were for that money, and then deciding on the final awards. Like, we basically signed off on the final awards. But we weren't personally involved in the programs.
Okay, recently, you know, I'm an avid reader, and I read Reader's Digest, and there was some educator, schoolteacher, high school, I believe, a gentleman
I love Reader's Digest.
in North Carolina. And they were having the issue with not being able to read, and I wanna say English, says America, as a primary language. They couldn't read English by the third grade. And you're right, if you don't have that fundamental, the foundation is gonna crumble. However they get there, you're right. I mean, it is, it is a gradual process. My question is, this educator in North Carolina, he thought outside the box. And I'm looking for improvement, and this is what this educator did. He put together a room, whether during school or after, but typically during school, and he put in 15 exercise bikes. And he got the kids, because we know childhood obesity is an issue, and he got the kids to go in the room. And they could choose to read textbooks, magazines, you know, appropriate. They could bring their computer, they could hold the book, the laptop, the cellphone, however they wanted, as long as they kept pedaling. Now, I don't have the results of that program. But this teacher, somehow, going through the bureaucracy, found a way to do it in North Carolina. I thought it was a great article, a great idea. I didn't write down his name, because I read it 60 days ago. And unfortunately, my desk is a mess, I couldn't find that Reader's Digest. But, I'm looking for innovative people. And again, I'm holding you to a higher standard, a higher ideal. You're at the state level. Don't tell me what you can't do. If you can't, if you're gonna tell me what you can't do, fine, put it in writing, so I can, I can learn even more. Tell me what you're going to do. So, what do you think about making the reading better, because it is a fundamental skill?
Yeah, I, I love, I love that idea. So, I actually have suggested, so going back to that. From grade K through 3, you're learning to read. From grade 3 on, you're reading to learn, right? So, you have to be able to read to read the math problem, right? You have to be able to read to read the science book. And so, it is also research-proven that kids need to move. It helps their brain. And so, we've reduced recess time in order to increase instructional time. And again, this, it all comes back to dollars, right? So, we are contracted with teachers for so many hours in a day. We need to get the maximum instructional time. Right now, we have kids six hours out of the day. So, with six hours, they're ours. The rest, the other 18 hours of the day, they're with their families, right? So, in those six hours, we have to maximize the number of instructional time, or amount of instructional time. What that has meant is less playtime. And when kids are young, especially from that same, you know, six months to five years, play is learning. And so, that's an important piece of it. It helps to, and it also for, for kids that have attention problems. When they're moving, they're better able to focus. And so, I love those ideas. There's, I'm frequently sending these out to, to teacher groups and stuff about, like, have you thought about this? What we've been doing, and I, anytime I see one of these on, do you guys ever follow Donors Choose? It's where teachers ask for donations for their classroom. There's lots of teachers that ask for money for those chairs that wobble, and things like that, for their classrooms. Anytime I see one of those, I donate to those ones. Because I think it's an important tool to helping them teach. So, my latest suggestion to the state is that, in the light, in light of what we're dealing with right now, sorry, I'm declining the call. That we potentially consider, in the next school year, extending the school day. That'll do a couple of things. Number one, we can have more recess time, right? So, build some playtime in the school day. Number two, it gives teachers a little bit longer instructional time to hopefully fit in more of what they're trying to get. And number three, it reduces the amount of babysitting families have to pay for, which will help our economy to rebound that much faster, right? If they're not coming out of pocket for that babysitting cost, they're putting that money into the economy instead. So, that's one, that's one of my bright ideas. We'll see where it turns out.
Okay, Felicia, so my next question is, you're talking about extending the school day. And so, right now, we have this No Child Left Behind Act. But don't you think if we have, or we don't have it?
No, that went away. So, the, it's two years ago, went away. It's called Every Student Succeeds Act now.
Okay, perfect. So, what are your thoughts of having a possible four-day week for students that are already high achievers, and keeping a five-day school week for students that need help with their language, grades, and disciplinary infractions?
Funny you mention that. We're actually talking about that. So, I'm taking a class right now to get a certificate in education finance. It's people from all over the country that are on this class together. It's put on by Georgetown University, but basically, we're doing it all virtually. And that was an actual discussion we just had last week. There were two kind of arguments on either side. The four-day school, which is actually happening in some of our rural counties already, it works well for some communities for that very reason. Because they're just having a longer day, they have Fridays off. It reduces transportation costs, overhead, buildings, all that. The problem we've found in some communities, not all, is that parents don't like it, because they have to find babysitter for that Friday. So, what they've done is they've moved their kids from the traditional public school to the charter public school that has a five-day. So, catch-22 there, right? I love your idea. I think that would be phenomenal. If you're, and, and I, I'm a strong believer that we should be teaching to the kid, right? So, where, where, teach, start where you're at. Meet you where you're at, right? And give the kid the tools to self-motivate. And to do a little bit of blended learning, right? So, if you're, if you're ahead, go sit on the computer, do your work. And if you wanna get to the next grade, fine. My, my little sister skipped a grade when she was in elementary school, because she was good. Fine. I don't think we should be, in my personal opinion, determining a kid's grade just by their age. Sometimes, that's not really accurate, right? Sometimes, and it's also varies by subject. They may be a fifth grade, a fifth-grade level in reading, and a third-grade level in math. But meet them where they are. So, I think that is a, is a good option, and it's something we should really consider after all of this, because they're gonna have missed a lot of instruction.
Okay, so, right now, we have time for three more questions, so I won't be asking another question. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to my other three colleagues.
So, Gianno, remind me to talk transportation with you on that one.
Okay, so, again, as a parent who has a child who is in the first grade, she does algebra and reads at a third-grade level. The schools have basically told me that if I pull my daughter out of school early because of, I get out of work early, my transportational situation, things like that, that they'll report me to CPS for educational neglect. While I'm voluntarily taking my daughter out of school for the last 30 minutes of class, which is basically sit around and clean up anyways, I'm going to get reported for educational neglect when my child is way above their standard. There's not much they're teaching her. But, this comes down to, like you said, teach the student where they're at. I started my daughter at home. ABC Mouse, Khan Academy, all of these things. The school did not tell any of the parents this.
Do you teach other parents lessons?
No, well, that's my problem. The school did not teach any of the parents this. Nobody on the PTA knew about Khan Academy, or ABC Mouse, or Duolingo, or any of these programs that are available. If you got elected, what would you do to not only start early education at home, but maybe get these programs to volunteer that the first two years is free for the child? What are some programs you would implement, or things like that?
So, I'm, I'm a huge fan of Khan Academy. I've been pushing that one for a long time. And all of my friends that have young ones that are not quite school age, I recommend them ABC Mouse as well. So, it's something that I think, unfortunately, or fortunately, that's silver lining, right, to COVID-19, is it's now becoming, oh, more and more people are becoming aware of it. CCSD is primarily using the Khan Academy as one of their avenues for delivering education right now. Part of the reason I think that there is such a big gap between parents like yourself that are very well-informed, doing all the right things for their kids, starting them young, right? Probably took them to preschool, the whole nine, is, is, it comes down to economics, right? So, and there's a huge gap in, we call it the digital divide in education, where there's families that have access to internet and computers and devices to be able to go to things like this. Their parents are usually also college-educated, so they're aware of child's brain development, all that fun stuff. And then, there's the families that are on the other side of that spectrum. And so, what I've been doing is finding groups and organizations that work within the community to, to help teach parents. One of them is called Abriendo Caminos. It's for Spanish-speaking parents that need to learn how to navigate the educational system. So, yeah, there's a lot more we can do, but...
Okay. Frank, Frank has one quick thing, but we are running short on time. So, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to limit your
I can talk this all, all day.
And you've been super informative, by the way. Thank you. So, Frank's gonna follow up with one quick thing. And then, you're gonna have one minute to respond to these two gentlemen's questions. Then, we'll give you the three minutes to wrap up. Thank you.
Sure.
So, a quick thing with the, with that whole, my daughter being above where she's supposed to be. Do you think it's right that the school threatens to call CPS on me for me pulling my daughter out? Because not only financially and time-wise, I get off of work at 2:00. I'm at her school by 2:15. So, I pull her out early, because it's convenient for us, and it's less expensive for the school. They don't have to feed her or keep her there. But yet, they're threatening, threatening me with CPS and educational neglect, when that isn't the case at all. What would you do about something like that?
So, this is a case where our justice system and our education system are not aligned, right? Unfortunately, our transancy, we call, we consider the laws that govern when your kid has to be at school don't always align with what we're doing in schools. Part of, that's part of the reason that our chronic absenteeism is having so many issues. The first thing we had to do was align that every school district was reporting absences the same way, because they weren't. Right? The second thing is that we have to determine what's truly considered an absence versus a tardy or a pull-out or whatever, right? If you're pulling her out that much before the end of school, that's not considered an absence, because she was there for more than 75% of the day. So, that really needs to be the, the folks in that school being educated on absentee policy from a state level. If you give me the name of the school before I walk out of here today, I will make sure they learn that.
Okay, my last question is, students and teachers are on lost hope right now, thinking that we're gonna go back to school, or thinking they're gonna go back to school towards the end of the month, or beginning of next month. What's a realistic day that you think that we're really gonna go back?
My personal opinion is it's not gonna happen. But at the end of the day, it's not our call. It's the Department of Health and Human Services. So, the reason we waited so long to call, make the call, not we, but the state in general, is the Department of Health and Human Services, when they make the call that it's not safe to go, that opens up the door to a bunch of resources. One of those being the ability to have digital days, or what we're calling digital learning, so that people are still getting paid, even though we're not in the school building. And the kids aren't being docked for not being in school, right? So, there's a lot of interrelated legislation and regulation that is driven by the Department of Health and Human Services, so that call has to come from them. And I don't know, I don't know when they're gonna make that call, but because we have such a intermingled economy here, where lots of parents are, are working in businesses that might not necessarily open either, or kids are coming back home to families that are multi-generational, and there's at-risk people in the home, I don't, I don't, I don't see it happening, frankly.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Ortiz. Can, so you have three minutes to give the viewers and listeners a conclusion, just why they should support your campaign, why you're the most qualified person for the campaign. And we do understand with this COVID-19 and everything, campaigning right now is really rough. So, please make sure that you give your contact information and how to get involved in your campaign.
Absolutely. So, first and foremost, thank you guys for the time. This has been good, and I, as you could tell, I could talk education all day long. This is my favorite topic. So, as you probably noticed, I'm pretty passionate about this. It is my hard work. My other job pays the bills, but this is what really fills my soul. I'm determined to make a difference in our education system and to see I'm determined to make a difference in our education system and to see it improve. As I said, that'll be the hill that I die on. This is something that I strongly believe in. And it was because of education that I am where I am today. Because I grew up in a poor rural community that I could have very easily gone in a different direction. But I had the right mentors and teachers and, you know, family members that pushed me in the right direction. So I want to be that role model for other kids. So I will continue doing this work as long as, as, you know, God has me on this earth. So as far as supporting my campaign, yes. COVID has made it much more difficult to campaign. I would normally be out knocking doors and having events and fundraising and all of that every single day, like that would take up all of my non-working time. Can't do that now. So what I've done is I've asked people if they want to support me. Number one, reach out to me, felicianortiz.com. Let me know. I'll bring you a yard sign. So that's one thing. If you do have the means, and I don't want anyone to go out of their way because I know that things are tight right now for a lot of people. But if you do have the means, please contribute. I'm spending a lot of time on, or a lot of what money I have on digital media. So go to my website, felicianortiz.com to contribute. Or you can look up my Facebook page, Felicianortiz for Board of Ed. You can also reach me by phone. My phone number is published on all of those sites. I'm pretty open book, so just call me. Anytime you guys have questions, again, reach out to me. I'm your resource. I've been doing this now for four years, so I've learned a lot. Always more to learn, part of the reason I'm taking that certification class. But I'm hopeful that that will just, you know, help me to be a more valuable member of the board over time.
Okay, thank you very much, Felicia Ortiz. Very informative. We learned a lot. And we do understand times are tough. So thanks a lot for being willing to come in and share your views with us. So at this time, that's going to end Veterans in Politics International's panel interview for Member State Board of Education District Number Three.